Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the fire in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the ready to be exercised in the world.
Roll call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony De Bonner. Ken Demers.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Denise Russ.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you very much.
The first budget up for review and discussion this evening is Park and Recreation. Lisa, if you would be so kind.
Thank you. So Lisa Carew, Park and Rec Director. I went through and put a little book together tonight for you. First thing is senior services, or excuse me, social services. And at $3,746 less than last year. But there's a little note to that. Because in my original budget, I proposed a full-time social worker. And that was eliminated, but you got documentation this evening from the Commission on Aging that they would like to have the council consider putting that in our budget for the obvious reasons that the demographics are changing and more and more our social services clerk is being called out with our municipal agent, with the police, the Board of Ed, Torrenton area Health District. And they're going out more and more having to do site visits and taking care of situations that we really haven't had until recently, so. The next thing, the first thing I believe in the packet tonight is the Parks Department. I'm just gonna give, it's expensive, it's up $62,667. That's to include one additional labor and it also is contractual pay raises that the Highway Union got and also yearly mandated minimum wages that go up every year. This will be, I believe, the last step for a while. So. In the rec budget, the contractual, it's actually down $10,954 for the rec. The reasoning is our administrative assistant, who was with us for over 30 years retired. So the person that came in after her, it came in at a lesser rate. It does include mandated minimum wages also, but it is down almost 11 grand. In our senior services budget, our, there, it's $64,137 additional from last year. That's for a assistant coordinator position, which would be a new position for the town and that would to complement Laura, what she's doing at the Senior Center, and that would be a full-time position. It also, it's including an increase in the minibus service to have more and more, you're gonna see both of them out on the road at the same time, both buses. And it's also including contractual pay raises. And then at Crestbrook, it's up a lot. And the reason is it's up almost 80 grand, it's up $79,592. And that's for roof replacements for both the pro shop and the restaurant, but I believe the manager has been in correspondence with the insurance company and that figure might change. I believe there's some negotiation going on behind the scenes that I'm not party to, but I have to include it in the budget because it definitely has to be addressed. It also is including minimum wage increases and what you just voted on a couple of weeks ago is eight additional golf carts for peak season. So that's kind of a rundown real quick of the expense drivers. Obviously, there's five different divisions that, you know, every asset or every part of the town at some point is involved with us between the parks, the recreation, senior services, social services, our food bank, fuel bank. So there's a lot that's, obviously, we touch everyone that's in town. I do have a couple just really quick, just so you're aware of it. Our Parks Department handles approximately 206 acre, 206.24 acres and another 4.5 at the Nochtuck River Greenway at the Cherry Hill area once that's developed. They handle buildings, it's 29.49 acres of public buildings. And they do approximately three miles of sidewalks during the winter months. Our Crestbrook Park, they handle just the maintenance guys up there. There's three full-time guys now and a bunch of seasonal people, 248 acres, 248.65 acres. I'm not, I can go into, what I did is put a, when you go into the budgets in the packet that you got tonight, you'll go through, the first one is the parks. I did a summary, it's an overview. You'll see, it's basically by categories. And you'll see what the increase is. And behind that, you'll have the actual budget that I originally presented to the town manager and the finance director. So you have both. It's like in the front, there's a synopsis after it's gone through multiple levels of review, review, review. And, but the original budget that was submitted back December 27th of last year is behind it. And then behind each one of the categories, you'll see little information, like in the Parks Department, you'll see all the parks that we are responsible for now. Since I've taken over as the director a million years ago, we've echo, or excuse me, the Lake Winnemont boat launch has been upgraded. We have two greenways now. We have the Nochtuck River Greenway and we have the Steel Brook Greenway that's also been added. And we've done Bets Park over once. We also have, just came on board last fall is our new dog park, very proud of that. People are using it. If you haven't gotten a chance to go down there, please go down there and check it out. That's our newest addition to the Parks Department and very proud of it, so. In the recreation budget, you'll see, again, like I said, it's a decrease of almost 11 grand because of the reasons I gave you earlier. So you'll see the overview on the front cover and then in behind it, you'll see the actual breakdown of all the categories in the department. Behind that is our summer brochure. And beyond that, we have senior services. I'm very fortunate, Laura is sitting next to me tonight. She is our Senior Center Coordinator and our Municipal Agent for the Town of Watertown. She's here also if you have any questions about that. You can see that the, she has a nice, strong following here tonight to support the senior services budget. And again, in her budget, we have put in there for an assistant so she is able to complement what's already being conducted down there. And then behind that, again, is the senior calendar. After that is Crestbrook Park. Again, I touched on the highlights of that, which would be the roofs is gonna be the big-ticket items this year. Hopefully, some of that might be eliminated. I don't think the whole amount will be eliminated with the insurance, but at least part of it, hopefully. So, I'm just trying to see. And then the social services at the end. I don't, I'm just giving you an overview, a synopsis that I can get much more into detail if you'd like.
I don't think there's a need quite yet, but we'll ask some questions and we'll go from there.
Yep.
I'm thinking probably the easiest way is to take section by section so we're not bouncing around so much.
Yep.
So under the parks budget.
Yep.
Which is page 37 and 38. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Okay, so I guess I'll start. I'll start on page 37 and I apologize, I know you went over through a lot of things, but I wasn't able to sort of keep up, so I might be repeating some of the things you already mentioned, but the, under Personnel Services, you have new laborers. So clearly, new position, it was approved by the town manager. And then underneath that, a working mechanic, not approved. Can you just say, explain again the reason for a new laborer and what would the working mechanic do and why didn't the town manager approve that?
Okay, again, I'll go back to it. The Parks Department is responsible for hundreds of acres of maintenance. It was a labor position, there are, right now, there's a Parks Foreman, who is a working Parks Foreman, he's in the trenches with the guys. There's a laborer and there is a park maintainer one. And then we have seasonal help that do trash removal and do the field maintenance. There's not just veterans in Deland, but there's a lot of other areas that they have to cover. So last year, the, a second laborer's position was in the budget. And when the town had to go back after the first round, unfortunately, that was one of the areas that was caught. And so I'm trying to restore it because you can't have parks or you can't keep getting new stuff and not have, being able to maintain it. The mechanic, it was, I believe, the manager's decision because we do have a mechanic at Crestbrook and there's mechanics at the Highway Department. So I believe he felt that we could share services. So.
Okay. I have a bunch, it's okay, but just keep going. Okay, so on the next page, on page 38, I mean, at the bottom, you requested for parks a total of $840,185 and the town manager approved 556,888. So that's a huge difference. I mean, I can see some of the big-ticket items, obviously not having a working mechanic. The Veterans Park fencing was not approved. Adams Road Park upgrades, the greenways. Can you just talk a little bit about some of those items?
Sure.
That you requested and how, especially, I'm wondering about the fencing in particular.
Okay, so the Veterans Park fencing is for the large Sandy Hook Playground.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
And that's right near the pavilion. If you have kids and if you've ever brought them to that playground, it's a lot of ramps and areas where somebody could take off and they'd be on the other side of the park before you could catch them. So it's just a very large playground with a lot of access points. So one of the things I wanted to do for safety purposes is at, you know, to put a fence around the perimeter of the playground. I used the same, I didn't even get a quote, what I did is I used the same as the dog park fence. That's what I used as a guide, so, because it's almost the same size. So, but that's what the thought process was behind there. There was, one of the things was a tractor with the mowing arm. At some point, the town's gonna have to bite the bullet and buy it. And that's to maintain the greenways and some of the areas that we have in town. Right now, we're relying on the Highway Department with the brush hog that they have. And, you know, street remove, or street sweepings and keeping the streets done is their priority, it's not doing us. And they've been absolutely marvelous helping us out when they ask what that would be to get our own machines so we would retrofit it to a truck and, or to a tractor, so.
And the paving, what, I mean, that's, $5,000 doesn't seem like a lot for paving.
How much?
Well, you requested 25,000, but 5,000 was approved by the town manager. What needs to be paid?
For years, I've been, I was getting 25,000 a year for paving. Anybody who's ever driven into Crestbrook can, you know, they, yeah. And, but the, 25,000 this year, I was kind of earmarking towards the boat launch area, but the town manager has some ARPA money, I believe, put aside for me, that we're gonna take care of that.
Okay.
But that, it was just to have enough so there was seed money that we could do, you know, if there was, you know, Crestbrook or Veterans Park or down here, so. But for years, I had 25 a year in the budget, so.
Okay, those are just, those are my parks questions. I'm done with the town.
I had a quick question there was page 37. Previously, there were budget amounts for utilities, electricity that looks like wasn't used or somehow otherwise allocated or accounted for. Town manager's budget is zero for that. Do you know what that was regarding and why, why it's zero?
Well, when we have like the irrigation system that we use and stuff.
Is that what it is?
That's where, we have irrigation at different sites. So that was one of the places where we have to pay for it, so.
And does that mean we're not gonna use the irrigation or if it's just paid for somewhere else?
It was moved into the public buildings budget.
I'm sorry, so I should have explained that, yeah.
And what else did I have?
And the WW2 monument lights is scheduled to get done this spring. They did some work going up to the Munson House this year. So that's one of the things to use the electricity that's gone to the Civil War Monument, bring it over and, you know, tap into that.
Anyone else with any questions on page 37 or 38 related to parks? Gary?
Like, yeah, on 37, 38, and actually, 40, 40, there's three line items, they all relate to clothing allowance or uniform, uniform protective, protective clothing and that, so I don't know why you needed three separately.
Because it's three different budgets.
There are all three different budgets.
So, the Parks Department has an addendum that was signed on November 3rd, 2022 with the Highway Contract. So the Parks Department, Crestbrook would fall into that. And it's $400 annually per person. So that would be that. And as far as under the rec budget, I believe that's what you're looking there.
Yeah, everything said park and rec, that's why, it was just one question.
Yeah, well, and the Parks Department would be the contractual with the union contract. As far as when you get into the recreation budget, which would be page 39.
Yep.
You're looking at clothing allowances, it's not an allowance really, it's, we buy staff shirts for our lifeguards, for our summer staff.
Okay.
So there's sweatshirts, different things that we buy throughout the course of the year that have Park and Rec on them.
All right, that's all I just wanted. I didn't, didn't realize it was three different departments, the way it was.
There's, there's five.
Yeah.
There's five divisions, so they're all kept separate to a degree.
All right.
So.
Just one, on page 38, under the paving, improvements, other 5,000. What does that, what's that considered for?
That's in case we need it.
No, she's talking about the.
No, the buildings and every?
Well, if we needed, say, if we have a problem up at, say, Veterans Park and there's, one of the sidewalks has to be replaced or fixed or something, you gotta have money to be able to do that. So that's what that is. It's, like I said, there used to be 25,000 a year put in there just to make sure that the, you know, the areas are maintained, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else on parks? Through the chair. Page 38, there's Adams Road Park upgrades for 25,000. What was, what were you doing there, Liz?
Are you familiar with the area? It's a neighborhood park.
Yeah, very, yeah.
So what I wanted to do is, the equipment that was in there is pretty antiquated and I wanted to put a new play, small, just a small neighborhood playground in there. The neighbors have requested it. It's not a lot of money, but just to have something in there. I mean, it's, it's a nice area that thought was there back in the 80s when they, you know.
Yeah.
When they got it for the town, but it's just, it's in backyards, if you're familiar with it, it's a fenced-in area behind houses. They've been kind of using it more like for leaf removal and stuff, so, but there's equipment that's in there that really needs to be replaced, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Liz, do you have anybody that does grant writing in your department?
That does what?
That does grant writing to be able to buy some of this stuff outside of the town budget?
Myself, I've been very successful in getting grants for the town.
And I'm just wondering if that's something that we can look at to get a grant for, for the Adams Road project.
Oh, for the place.
And some of your other projects that weren't funded, if we could.
Right.
Pay a little bit more attention or whatever to some grants that are out there.
Yeah, if they're, if they're out there, it depends on what, what, you know, they kind of run in spurts, like right now, the big thing is greenways because it's alternate method of transportation, so that's where there's a lot of money right now. And I know Jerry and, you know, the town has been pursuing that. I'm not familiar of anything right now. I've written them for the dog park, I've, the senior buses, you know, I've written quite a few for the town, so.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll move on to the recreation part of your budget, which is pages 39 and 40. Are there any specific questions on that budget?
Can I just add something in right before the meeting tonight? The town manager, there was an error when you got, I didn't know it either until tonight. The maintenance, not buildings, 4,000 has been restored into that account. There was an oversight when the budget was drafted, I guess.
Which line was that again?
Under purchased services.
Oh, third one down?
Yep, third one down, maintenance, not buildings. It was completely deleted out, but that's been restored, told me tonight, so.
Any questions on this part? If not.
Through the chair. Just two questions here. Under purchased services, on page 39, you have credit card fees of $1,500. Is that like having a credit card and you have to pay fees or like, or having, like people using credit cards and you pay for?
We have to pay when people use credit cards.
Okay.
And 99% of everything we do now is by credit card.
Okay, okay, okay. My second question was the maintenance, not building swimming pool. What, what's the work that needs to be done on the swimming pool?
It's a hole in the ground that sucks up money. It's seriously, the pool is a dinosaur, the pool is vintage 1960s. We are very diligent every year keeping that thing together. There's a new pathway from the upper parking lot, where you park for the tennis courts that goes down to the restaurant and all the way down to the pool now. But the pool is an older pool that at some point will have to be, along with the tennis courts, you know, are, they're gonna have to, some heavy-duty decisions. It was rehabbed, pretty much totally rehabbed in the late 90s. And it's, you know, every year, we strip down, we have it acid washed, repainted, do all the necessary repairs and stuff, but the pool is, it's older, so, just so you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chew a lot of bubble gum, they need it.
No, no.
Anyone else on these two pages? Turn your mic on. Yep. Well, this is probably the end for this section.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Mrs. Carew, it was discussed at recent meetings, what descriptive brand should be used to encourage positive community growth? This is properly summarized in your model for your all-encompassing department. We are your quality-of-life department. That's for all of us citizens in town, our senior citizens and our youthful population. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question that's slightly outside of the budget. I know a few years back, someone passed away, left some money and I think every year that's used for.
Yeah, I haven't seen it this year yet. It should be, should be here. I don't, has it? Yeah, well, we got two of the other checks so far, so yeah, so it should be.
I was just wondering what the plans were.
Anytime, anytime, it's covered, yeah.
I was just wondering what the plans were for those funds for this coming year.
You guys got the final say on that.
Okay.
All I can say is a splash pad.
What was that?
Splash pad. That's, that's, that's a goal, okay.
Mr. Chair, the money is actually called the Staver Foundation money. And it's handled through the Connecticut Foundation, okay? We've used the money in the past for the rehabilitation at the tennis courts, which the man had donated the money to the town. And the money is in the foundation. We get the interest that it makes. So that figure can go up depending on the economy, depends on what happens with Wall Street, okay? We use balance of it now to finish the dog park, which took us way over five years to complete. But now that it's completed and everybody's using it, it's a big hit with everybody. So the Staver Foundation, first of all, it's in a separate fund to be managed and the final say does go before the town council. And it doesn't have to be used every year, it can be built up for a large capital expenditure, which the town doesn't have to fund, or it can be used in chunks. So the Staver, it's the Jack Staver Foundation. And the one thing that has to be done, and Lisa can tell you that, weekly, Mr. Staver came to the Park and Rec office and all he wanted was a bench by the pond in front of Taft Pond from when he watched the kids ice skating, because he could walk from his house to there. So we still have yet to get a bench, which we plan on putting in at the tennis courts. Because the tennis courts were renamed and there were signs up there in memory of Mr. Jack Staver. So that's the.
So what Bill doesn't know is the, the bench came in, so just.
Yeah, the bench is in, now we gotta put it up.
Good, good to hear.
That is the Staver Foundation.
But anyway, so that's a perpetual fund that will be coming to the town forever. It's a $2 million donation that was made to the Recreation Department. And it, you're getting the interest off the $2 million forever. So when I'm gone, please keep your eye out for it and make sure it's being used.
Make sure that check comes in the mail.
Where it's supposed to be, like a splash pad, okay?
That, that money is earmarked for capital improvements, not something, day-to-day operations, no. He wanted capital improvements that would benefit everybody. And like Lisa says, splash pad, but looking down the line, the replacement of a pool, I see Southbury is talking 2.2, 2.7 million dollars in that range. Splash pad may be way to go.
So moving on to the Senior Center section, which is pages 41 through, I guess 41. The main question I have is, under Supplies and Materials, the fuel inventory, there's a substantial increase. Tell me about that.
The what?
Fuel inventory, it's in there as $478,000.
Where is this?
Or I am on the page right after that. So forget I asked that question, that's the next page.
I was gonna say, that's like.
That's a different budget, sorry.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
I was gonna say. That's, that's not me.
Don't shock us.
That's our central services, so maybe that's part of it is yours.
That's Susan, that's Susan. While we're on the Senior Center, though, I just, this is based on the census, as of the 2020 census, in the population in the Town of Watertown, 24.8% is 18 and under, 6.3 is 18 to 24 years of age, 29.9% are 25 to 44, 24.9% is 45 to 64 years of age, so that's part of our goal, our group here. And then 14.1% is 65 and older. If you add the 45 up age group, that's 39% of our population in this community and they vote, so, it's just, it's a waste, so.
Any questions on the Senior Center? Yep, Rachel.
So I'm wondering, there's, this is obviously a very large increase, you know, adding an assistant senior center coordinator, adding. You know, adding an assistant senior center coordinator, adding a part time secretary, increasing the minibus operation, I'm assuming that's the seventy thousand dollars um number. And then obviously an increase in special event programs, increase in recreation supplies. What what do you have in terms of numbers, in terms of visits and time spent? And like, what's the data that you have that um is leading you to request such an incredibly large amount? I mean, that's a huge increase in the percentage of this budget. You know, obviously personnel, supplies, lots of things, so I know we had COVID and obviously that had greatly impacted the senior center. But has there been like just a dramatic increase in the number of people using the senior center and?
The numbers are definitely increasing. From, obviously, we dropped off a lot from COVID. I mean, it was, you know, basically the place was shut down for two years. I'm going to have Laura answer some of this, but we didn't have a brand new tracking system that we're using. But one of the things to keep in mind is there's people using that building while night, that as soon as we closed. There's groups that are using it for meetings and everything else, we don't charge these groups. So some some of you might have meetings down there and you'll see rec staff or you'll see maybe Laura's there. So that was always the goal of the council to have this as a community center also. And as far as that goes, I I really don't know the status, we haven't heard any update recently as far as um the community center slash senior center and the compound up there with the police department, we haven't had any update in quite a while. But that's something down the road too. As far as the um part time secretary position, that was actually included last year and it fell under, it never got broken out. It was just under um seasonal temporary salaries. So it's it's better broken out this year, but last year it it was kind of new. So it it kind of was just categorized under a different title, so. I still think two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in the scheme of things for thirty nine percent of the population is a drop in the bucket. Considering what is cranked out down there, I mean, um, if you have an opportunity, the calendar is in there of what has been presented, it's a, it's from last month, it's well, it's from this month, it's from March. But the amount of activities that are going on down there are, it's phenomenal, okay? Yes, there is some fees involved for some of this stuff because it's not free, you know, I mean, people have to pay to play, that's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. I think if um you, I, she's going to be able to tell you a little bit better on the uh the numbers, but we're definitely servicing the public. More and more of the buses are being used tandem, they're going in different directions, getting the people out there. We have trips again, we haven't had trips since before COVID. So, you know, she's, Laura has introduced trips back, so they've gone shopping to, you know, Walmart in Waterbury or in Nagatuck and then go to grandpa's diner for lunch. They had a thing scheduled the day, the same day as the Shamrock Shuffle. Unfortunately, with the weather, it had to be canceled, but they were going up to the Indian Museum up in Washington and then to lunch someplace. So there's a lot of activities that trying to reintroduce, and the other thing is too, is our senior population is getting younger. So and they're expecting more, you know, the younger group coming up, the boomers are coming, and they're not content with some of the activities, you know, they want more and trying to provide more, that's what we are here for, so. Again, I'm going to say six, two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars or or three, excuse me, six, two hundred sixty three thousand is just a drop in the bucket as far as I'm concerned for the amount of people that are serviced, so. Would you?
I think that since I was hired on June first of two thousand twenty one, we've seen about a hundred and fifty new people come through the doors and apply to be members at the center. We have, you know, went from no activity to, you know, eight to ten additional activities beyond our regular schedule every month with trips, with parties, events, luncheons, things we're all doing in house to try to keep the costs down for seniors. We, I've also seen an explosion of social service cases in the community and I'm well over probably a hundred and twenty five referrals since I started. These are not one time engagement episodes, these are on sometimes ongoing, sometimes a year I'm involved in a case. So it's not a just a quick interaction and then we're out, so we have seen so much in that area. And we we, you know, I have this conversation with our town manager and with Lisa on a regular basis. We probably average four new referrals, four to five new referrals a week, this is still happening. People come in, they read the um the schedule and the town time, so they're, they come in off the street, they come in for parties, they're not signed up for, but we try not to turn people away because we want to engage them. And um the two part timers that are there are extremely helpful in our process, but not really able to assist in the function that I have in the social service arena. And uh, you know, we pride ourselves on the fact that we engage the people when they come in the door and we try to make everybody feel at home and that we try to promote a family environment. And that, you know, that's labor intensive to be able to provide that kind of an atmosphere in the center.
Any other, Gary?
On your, uh, we're the assistant senior center coordinator and the part time secretary, how many hours a week are you looking for that? Are they twenty hours or thirty two hours or?
Carol is twenty four? Yeah, the twenty five hours a week.
Twenty five hours.
The secretary is a twenty five, but she's already, she's already been employed there for a year and a half.
Yeah, that's not a new position.
It's not new.
Oh, okay.
She's been there.
Yep.
It was just last year was, like I said, it was listed under temporary salaries, it didn't categorize her out, so.
Any other questions or comments on the senior center?
Denise is here.
Through the chair.
I have a couple. Excuse me, for special events and programs, we went from five thousand five hundred to ten thousand. Can you explain why?
You've been there, you've seen it, so.
I've been there, but I haven't, I'm sorry, I haven't seen it. On the days that I go, it's the same people, we get twelve people for Poquino, twenty twenty five for Bingo and stuff. The only time I've seen large groups is when it's a luncheon, you get about sixty to sixty five people. Otherwise during the day when I there or I stopped up one day, it's not that busy. But that's why I'm asking, why such a jump? Because we haven't had, and I'm hoping this coming year, if this passes, that we get more people in to give lectures, because we haven't had anybody but one for a year. It's just been, you know, lunches and picnics and things like that. So I'm just asking why such a a large increase?
Well, more and more, um, I I know that there's people that have been donating, she's, Laura's been fortunate in getting corporate sponsors or I shouldn't say this, um, rest homes and convalescent homes have been helping to sponsor some of the events. But to have, to be able to offer more and I'm looking long range that there's going to be more activities and more trips and more special events and recreation is different for everybody. You prefer um lectures and 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 the art series to be able to introduce that and to be able to offer that. But most things have a price tag attached to them, so. Sometimes unfortunately, we have to make decisions too, if um the attendance is not going to generate enough. Sometimes decisions have to be made that, you know, things have to get canceled if if there's not enough interest generated, so. But trying to increase it with also to increase things like possibly on weekends and and to, you know, if there's a compliment of another person down there without going crazy with overtime or anything, but to be able to do things evenings, weekends. I mean, you know, right now, we're kind of locked into a eight thirty to four thirty schedule, but to be able to expand that, you know, I mean, a community center or slash senior center should be open, you know, a lot more than just, you know, eight hours a day, so.
And let another, on uh, on the same question, special events. On your special events for park and recreation, I noticed you had seventy five hundred and the senior center is asking for ten. Don't you have a larger clientele coming in and you're getting a smaller amount? It doesn't correspond in my mind, but I just noticed that. And recreational supplies, they went up also to forty five hundred. What's that include?
Okay, um, it would be, I know that there's new programs that have been introduced. Actually, from the existing budget, it's gone up to grand, two thousand dollars. Everything is going up in price, your fuel, gasoline, groceries, anything we're spending on right now is increased. So that's why you're going to see some increases, but compared to this year, uh, current to next year, it's a two thousand dollar increase. So, I mean, there's there's programs that are being offered to to offset, you know, crafty Tuesdays or whatever, whatever some of this stuff is, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else related to the senior center? We have Chris Brook on page seventy four, sorry, seventy one.
Seventy one is the projected.
Revenue?
Revenues that again.
And I do have one question on that.
Projection.
Is the daily greens fee, I want to say, a true projection? Or is it a number to balance the budget for Crestbrook?
Yes and no, it depends. Golf course is a hundred percent weather related. So right now, we still haven't opened, so you can see we've already received money to date because the fiscal year just, or, you know, I mean, right now that in to balance it out, um, you know, the sooner we open, the more money is going to be coming through the door. We've sold a lot of season tickets already, more than we have in the past as far as this time of year, because we haven't opened. So um, what, how can I say it? We have an incredible uh working staff up there now that's really brought a new um, um, what did I say it?
Atmosphere.
Huh?
Atmosphere.
Thank you, perfect, yes. So we, very welcoming and it's very, um, people are enjoying going up there. We just had a couple of people today came in this afternoon down to the office downstairs and they came from Waterbury Country Club and they're joining, so word is getting out there. Our golf pro is 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 really a super guy, he's right from town, he's um our, he's bringing back the youth golf, which is our fastest growing, um, it's the dump, the things are in there too, the stats from the National Golf Association. We have some tournaments coming up that we've never hosted before that he's introduced. We have, um, he works terrific with our superintendent up there, Ray Marks, and the staff. Our senior men's league has like ninety eight people or some crazy amount, it's like, so people are golfing and word's getting out there. The Crestbrook is a great place to be, so it's, you know, I think everybody did good, they they really scored when we got them, so.
Any questions or comments?
Through the chair, it's it's really not part of your budget, it's just an operations thing. Um, we we've had a tournament like every year for a bunch of years, we play golf on Good Friday and.
It's going to be on Holy Saturday this year.
Yeah, we were turned away for Good Friday, do you know the story behind that?
I can't, but but we um tried to work with him and so he's going to be in on Saturday. What happened was this commission made some determinations this year to um have it so the golf course would be open on holidays to the public and sometimes when you have a tournament on a holiday, you're kind of cutting your own legs off. You're getting guaranteed money from the tournament, but you're turning the public away and you can only do that so many times where they're going to go someplace else. So this year, um, for Steve's tournament, I think that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's on that Saturday, the following day instead, so.
So you expect, in other words, you you expect more than a hundred and twenty golfers to go through there on Good Friday?
On springtime, if that, when the course is open, yeah, like for that holiday, because a lot of people have it off, so the place will be jammed. As long as it's not snowing.
Yeah, well, it it did two years ago.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Thank you.
So but yeah, if you look in your, um, the commission, because we were, um, with holidays and stuff, there was um concern that we were kind of making it difficult for the public to use the course, so that's why there was some decisions made.
Yeah. It was just, it was just the tradition, that's all.
Yeah.
We just did Good Friday.
We're still trying to help them out though, that's why, you know.
So we'll do Good Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, thanks.
Any other questions on the golf course?
Just one quick one.
To answer your question too, uh, since we put in the electronic tee time system up there, we have a lot more information available to us, such as the number of hits we got for a Good Friday that were turned away because we had a golf tournament on that particular day. And then look at Saturday morning, early the day after, which is Holy Saturday, and saw very few hits. So saying that, the commission decided on holidays to turn down because a lot more people are there. Still accepting the tournament, just have to give them another day. And basically, it's a dollar and cents thing, but we have the information available to us now with the electronic tees time, which we didn't have before. So that's why we don't want to turn the tournaments away. And another thing, leagues, we've never had leagues on Tuesday night. Now we have two going off against each other, so leagues now at Crestbrook every night. Four of the nights have two leagues and there's one night that has one league, which I'm sure hopefully somebody will fill that in. So with the electronic systems that we have in place and the information that we're getting, that we didn't have before, was done on scratch pieces of paper. Somebody's memory, which in my case, we don't want to work, go too far with that. But it has definitely helped with what we do with the decisions that we make, we're more than glad to answer the questions. Thank you for that question, Ken.
Denise?
One question, Lisa. I know people talk about the golf course being not sufficient, it can be sufficient, it can run on its own. What do you see as the golf course saying in another two, three, four years? Do you think it will be self sufficient where people are saying it's not?
Okay, so that's a subject I love. So there's a few things, number one is you can't sell the golf course, you can't sell it. You got public funding for it from the state in February, you cannot sell it. So that comes up every periodically that somebody comes up with that idea. It doesn't have to be used as a golf course, but you can't sell it. One of the things to keep in mind, it's an asset to this community. Little by little, thank you to the council and some of you who were sitting there in two thousand and twenty, or excuse me, two thousand and ten, excuse me, two thousand and ten. That was the first year that the golfers weren't paying for the swimming pool with the lifeguards. They weren't paying for the tennis courts anymore, so that was thank you to whoever, I know some of you were sitting here. And um, so little by little, the town has assumed some of the responsibility for the recreation resources that are up there. Because it's not just a golf course, it's a public park. So um, the, as far as the finals, I I, we've been chipping away because there was a deficit way back when after the dot coms and all that, you know, when they had the economy kind of took a nosedive. Been digging out of that hole, um, I don't think we have a final answer from last year, but it's it's, it was working in the right direction. I think with the people we have up there right now, um, that it's making a big impact. Again, it's a resource that we have and like I said, two thousand ten was a turning point. Up till that point, every single penny spent at that golf course for lifeguards and for any repairs, it was over a hundred thousand dollars just to build the deck on the restaurant, everything came from the golfers, okay? The town didn't assume anything. And on top of that, and I'm going to really not score some points right now, but the town or the um, up until not that long ago, the golf course also used to turn back a um, what was the word?
Administrative.
Administrative, yeah, something, to the tune. To the tune of $941,000 over course of time. Now, it was for over maybe like a 15, 20-year period, but the golf course, when it was making all the money, turned back to the town, $941,000 worth of revenue, back to the town, to the general fund. So that was another thing, thank God, probably 10 years ago now, that the town, the council overturned that. And then in the last, this is the third or fourth year, that thank you, that the town is also assuming some of the responsibilities for the employees that are up there, because we've had people that worked at the highway department transferring up to Crestbrook because it's all the same union, and then we're responsible for them. So the town has assumed some of the responsibility for their medical and the insurances, which is a big, huge health, because they are town employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments related to the golf course?
As an addendum to that, we were over $666,000 on the credit side to the town four years ago. Now, we're down to about, I believe, but our finance director's saying that last year's figures were approximately in the black, $54,000 as of June 30th. Numbers up and down, once the final audit and reconciliations are done, we'll come in, okay? But now we're down under, just a tweak under $300,000. So yeah, we're making headway on it. And that's without, and I have asked the council that we should forgive the 941, because the 941 was taken. And anybody in business knows that. You can't zero your books every year. You sole proprietor, at the end of the year, you have a profit of $75,000. You can't put the whole 75 in your pocket. You've got to leave operating expenses, you have to leave capital expenses for the next business year. Zero enterprise fund. So now, and I have proposed, as long as my time on the commission, that when we get to that zero point balance, that we come up with a formula that says so much remains with the golf course, so do we have operating budgets and we don't go into this deficit situation in the future. And then an excess percentage above that goes back into the general fund. So we have to get to that point, but yes, we are working to that point. And last year's figures, like you said, has to be reconciled, has to be audited, but it's around $54,000. So we are making headway in the black towards getting to that zero point. And at that point, then we can discuss what we want to do for percentages to keep the golf course viable and certain amount of real good years, then the general fund should be, see that, should go into the general fund.
Moving on to the social services, that's on page 28. Is there any questions on that? It's a relatively small area.
Again, just going back to that, the Commission on Aging, you all got a memo this evening from the Commission on Aging, saying that they would like to see a full-time social worker. We, we have our clerk right now, but she is not a social worker, so she's limited in what she is able to do, so.
Any questions on that? Seeing none, I think that means.
Thank you.
Tilly, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next budget is the information technology budget. Michael? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for having me. The infinite technology budget for 2023 has ever-changing a slightly bit at this point. We're still, let me just change the slide here. We're still all about the investment in Watertown Security and its data and its programs and nothing's really changed too much. We still have the hardware, the maintenance, the warranties, the contracts, and descriptions and software. It's pretty stagnant, doesn't really change all that much from last year. What's been changing is the cybersecurity a lot. You've been hearing in the news that towns, we are a vast amount of information that people want. So we've invested a little more money into email impersonation software protection and backups and what we should be doing. So that's, it's all on cyber risk and compliance. And a lot, the insurance company drives a lot of our compliance issues and drives the costs up a little bit. And that's with the cyber insurance. And the cyber insurance involves ransomware protection, and that's basically just the endpoint protection, which replaced the antivirus, the traditional antivirus. Now we have a MFA and EDR, endpoint detection response, and also a dedicated SOC, which is the security center, operation center, that monitors our, our network 24 by 7, based on the insurance company requirements coming up for next year. So from that, what's driving the costs of, what's driving up the costs? And again, increased cybersecurity requirements being forced down every year. It gets more changing as the market changes and as the ransomware and as the cyber criminals change, we have to adapt to them. And the insurance company is kind of driving that right now. The hardware and network infrastructure refresh projects is constantly changing, so we're, and then you have the third-party maintenance contract, which it used to be 5%, now 8 to 10% increases, even 15% on Microsoft is not unforeseen. So we do have some, some technology costs that are involved in that. And my main concern is, how can we reduce the cost? We follow total cost of ownership. That's where you look in the future, you kind of look at what's the estimated expenses associated with purchasing, deploying, using, and retiring the equipment. So you have a lifespan of the equipment that you want to follow. And again, you want to keep the standardization of all the equipment to the point where the total cost ownership goes down. Otherwise, it's, we wouldn't go out to Staples and buy laptops and computers. We buy it from, from Dell as a commodity, we lease them now, which saves us a lot of money to be buying quantity now. So the total cost of ownership goes down. So we are looking at how, how we can reduce the cost to offset the cybersecurity. And also, we're looking at smart, how do we, technology decision-making, how are we doing that? How do we know that our $10,000 investment in this technology or this software is working? We've been in partnership with GMS. GMS is an international professional IT association worldwide government leaders. And basically, it's a bunch of statewide and international-wide IT directors and supervisors, just like myself, that all communicate and network. They tell us what works, what doesn't work, what we tried, what doesn't work, so we can better, better decisions. And that's saving us a lot of money at that point. So we don't spend $10,000 and find out later it's a total mistake. So we are looking at it. And what's changed from '22 to '23, our maintenance contracts have gone up 142,000 from 84,000. That's based on some of the insurance requirements, some of the new software we put in place last year, which was not in the budget last year because we didn't have time to put them in place to get cyber insurance. We went off the budget and had to purchase this extra stuff. Now we're paying for a little more for it, plus there's additional changes this year. So in some sense, it went down because our, our strategies and other ways it went up. The police department is pretty much stagnant in my budget, what they brought over. We actually took out $5,000 cut from the budget this year for consulting costs. That was based on some equipment they put in that we didn't find. We didn't need that type of costs, so we took it out. But they do have their own budget as far as IT goes and some of the services they still have in their camp, so that's why you're not seeing any increase on there. The infrastructure, some parts has gone down, some has gone up. We're looking at a refresh this year to make sure we can accommodate next year's and new software and future growth. So that's, and there's our budget. We've grown about 100,000, a little over 100,000 this year. And any questions?
Any question?
Yeah, I have a couple. Fire department. Anything for the fire department in your?
No, this year, the fire department, we have some software still in place, they're still evaluating some software. We have some money set aside. They have not given me a budget number yet that we're going to be spending, but they still have some money from last, this, this current year that they, as soon as they finish evaluating the software and put it in place, we'll go ahead and spend that. But that's currently my budget unspent at this time.
Okay, I guess my, now, a follow-up question that I ask all, most other departments is, where is there room in this town, community, to start consolidating some efforts? Like the school department currently operates their own separate information technology from the town, correct?
The school is separated, yes.
So is, is there, do you think in any way there's an area where eventually we can merge into one department? So we, some of these costs now are shared between the town and, and the school department instead of running two different separate systems?
It's, they do have separate, they have funding through E-rate, they have special rates that goes through grants and stuff, there are a lot of grants they use. I haven't seen the data on that, let's see what we can save.
I guess that, Mr. Tom Andrew, I look at you and say, I think that's an area, again, that we could look at and start consolidating some efforts in the town to save money and maybe use towards the senior center or something else in the town.
Yeah, I think in our last town council meeting, we had discussed that, or one of the last meetings. We're going to put together a committee to start discussing where we can share services and IT will certainly be one of the topics that we would sit and talk about.
Gary? You talked about future growth. Where do you, where do you see the future growth?
The future growth would be for the server and the capacity, network storage capacity and the bandwidth between the different departments for backups and cybersecurity, depending on what, what happens in the cyber world. It's always unknown. We do have some funds in there, which we put aside for growth with cybersecurity and, you know, ransomware seems to be down right now because the, they're saying because Russia and Ukraine are now not focusing on the ransomware, so it is down. That could change.
All right. And what do you, do you see any, any programs or ways that like the high schools can get involved, like for like an internship or something that would help?
Yeah, I've spoken to the town manager and we, we're looking at internships and there, we've done a slight internship in, in the past. There's certain projects that will, we could put out to an intern, so we'd be looking at that, yes, definitely. Maybe some high school students if possible, that's always in the back of my mind. When I went to the high school, we did have some high school kids with some responsibilities.
I just had one quick question. I see some overtime in this budget, but I was wondering, actually, I'll look this way, where in the budget are the salaries that would?
Yeah, so Mike's is in the finance department budget and then his employees that work in his office are under miscellaneous central, because they take care of the whole town, they're not really just one department. There's two positions there. I want page numbers and stuff.
No, thanks. And I guess my question comment is, a year or two ago, we made the IT its own kind of department in the budget. Is there a reason why we didn't bring the salaries into the same budget versus?
Yeah, we just did this last year. Easier to track what Mike wants to accomplish and what he does instead of having a little bit in everyone's department, like computers, for instance, Mike budgets for everyone's computers, now they're not separate.
Yeah, I understand that.
So no, we didn't, we didn't really talk about salaries last year. It's something maybe moving forward, we definitely could.
Just so it's the whole department kind of, no one package.
Right, right, I, I understand. But yes, we could think about doing that for next year.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And is our meeting adjourned?
Parking rec, you know, I just want to say thank you. You know, you guys do a lot for the money that you're given. And I wish that this town could support you in 100% of what you guys do. But obviously, you know that there's hard decisions that we have to make to make the town also affordable for people, so, but thank you for every, everything that you guys do.
Now, meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.